Good evening, and welcome to the Lowell zoning Board of Appeals public meeting for July 25, 2022. As approved by city manager in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we are still in a hybrid Zoom meeting and a call-in, so we will have members as well as publics and participants calling in, and we'll let the clerk referee that as well as DPD. If you have any phones on, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Take your phone calls in the hallway decorum. If you wish to speak amongst yourselves, please do so in the hall, not to interfere with the public meeting. If you wish to speak on behalf of petition, please come to the lectern, strike podium, and state your name and address for the public record. Tonight's alternate voting member will be Mr. George Proko, moving into continued business. ZBA 2022 Variance is ZR Development Group LLC, 72-74 Bovair Street and 253 West Sixth Street, Section 6.1, Section 5.1, Section 8.1.3, Subsection 4. ZR Development Group has applied to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals for variance approval to redevelop the existing St. Louis School Building at 72-74 Bovair Street and 253 West Sixth Street into 19 residences with 14 off-street parking spaces. The applicant requires variance approval under Section 6.1 for relief from the off-street parking requirement, Section 5.1 for relief from the land area per dwelling unit requirement, and usable open space requirement under Section 8.1.3, Subsection 4, for relief from the minimum square footage requirement, for any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, council. How are you tonight?
Good evening. Great, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight again representing ZR Development Group LLC, and with me tonight are the principals, Jim Zorbus and Ryan Rourke. I also have Mark O'Hara of O'Hara Engineering and Kerry Owens of North Point Construction Management. As the chairman mentioned, this is a continued hearing from the June meeting. Since that meeting, we have provided the board with a revised site plan, revised renderings, and a revised floor plan. At the previous hearing, the board's overwhelming concern seemed to be that of the amount of relief we were seeking for off-street parking. As you know, we are proposing 19 units here, so according to the ordinance, we would be required to have 38, provide 38 off-street parking spaces. We were initially providing 24 off-street parking spaces and seeking relief of 14 spaces. At the suggestion of this board, we went back to the drawing board. We took a look at the plans to determine if we could get more onsite parking. So by reducing the size of the parking spaces, as was suggested by one of the members of the board, we were able to provide 25 parking spaces within the main parking area. In addition to that, we have four parking spaces facing the building, including the handicap space also in the main area, and we are proposing five additional parking spaces to the rear of the property along Bolio Street. We have redesigned the rear of the property so that in addition to the five parking spaces we're providing, we are also able to maintain the outdoor usable open space for the tenants. That area is clearly depicted on the revised renderings that we provided. There's a good bird's eye view of what the site would look like, particularly with respect to the rear of the property. The applicant is also proposing to use a material known as grasscrete for that parking area along Bolio Street, which allows us to keep the impervious materials to a minimum on this site. Ultimately, the revised plan allows for 34 off-street parking spaces, which means that our relief sought now is down to four spaces from 14. We believe that the revised parking plan, together with the available on-street parking along Bovair Street, essentially solves the parking problem, and for the most part, keeps the vehicles associated with development onsite. In addition to the relief sought for off-street parking and the size of the parking spaces, we're also seeking relief for lot area per dwelling unit and usable open space. We also have some pre-existing non-conforming dimensional requirements that are part of the property. So at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mark O'Hara. He's going to go through the revised site plan with the board, and then Kerry will go through the revised floor plans, and I'll come back and summarize. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Appreciate that.
For the record, Mark O'Hara, O'Hara Engineering, 21 Mansion Drive in Lowell. I think John covered the changes, the significant changes to the plans. We did add a grading plan to it because of the sidewalk. We're elevating the sidewalk and provide a greater reveal on the curbing, so we added that plan. There was also some small changes to the patios, you know, the recreational area, and we did add those four grasscrete parking spaces. Also, I've been in communication with Mike Stewart from the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility for our recharge of the stormwater runoff. We are providing approximately 20% of the site is now pervious, whereas currently it's 100%, so that'll also help reduce the amount of stormwater runoff. It is an area where there is a combined sewer, so we're doing whatever we can possibly do to reduce that stormwater runoff. As John had mentioned, increased number of parking spaces, 34, that was really the most significant change to the plans. And I think we relocated the bicycle rack to the other side of the building, so that's the external one. So yeah, so other than that, I'm going to hand it off to Kerry.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
And board. For the record, my name is Kerry Owen of North Point Construction, located in Hudson, New Hampshire. So since our last meeting, I'm going to talk about the internal plan changes that have occurred. We have added, as you walk in the entry door from Bovair Street, we have added built-in mail slots. There'll be one for each unit. In addition, there'll be at least four parcel lockers in the same vicinity. And then as you head down a short flight of stairs to what is considered the first floor level, which is partially below grade, there will be a separate parcel locker room for any type of FedEx, UPS, or Amazon deliveries. And at the rear on the same first floor level, there is internal bike rack storage for nine bikes total, and in addition, there'll be a transportation hub with bus routes of the city, maps, anything else that the landlord would like to post. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry and Mark. So as I stated at the last meeting, this proposal aligns with the city's master plan and sustainable Lowell 2025 by converting this property to, reusing this property to multifamily residential use. Both those plans, the master plan and sustainable Lowell 2025, were adopted with input from all neighborhoods, including the Centerville neighborhood. It's exactly what was anticipated for the reuse of this type of building. Article 8.1, which allows for this pathway forward, is in place for this specific reason, to reuse these types of buildings within the cities. It's unquestionably the best reuse of the property. It provides the city with the highest amount of real estate tax revenue, and it stabilizes the building for decades to come. However, due to the uniqueness of this property, including its size, location, and shape of the property as opposed to other lots in the neighborhood, it presents its challenges to the developer. For these reasons, we believe that we meet the criteria for issuance of the variances that we're requesting tonight, and we respectfully request approval tonight. Happy to answer any questions of the board and/or the public for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the update, and I want to let the record show the amount of due diligence by councilor and his team and the developers with response to documents required. That's being said, I'd like to open up the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Sandra McNamara, president of Centerville Community Coalition, and I'm asking, I didn't receive the revised package until late Wednesday, so it didn't give me enough time to get a neighborhood group meeting together for the neighborhoods to voice their opinion. So I'm asking if we can continue it until I can do so.
Will the documents posted on the city website?
I was informed Wednesday. I don't have a clue.
Documents are always posted on a public website.
The attorney notified me that he had a copy at his office to come pick it up.
Okay.
And that's what I did.
Okay. The obligation is public notice, so the notice of documents are placed on there. Continuances can be requested by the petitioner and/or the board. So as far as the documents, if they're posted on the public website, then that's a public access. So.
That's if the public follows them.
Excuse me?
But again, I said that's if the public follows them. How would they know that this particular issue?
Well, that's the only way.
How would they know that he revised unless they followed it every single day?
Well, I would surmise that if you're following a petition, good, bad, or indifferent, that the concerns would be to check the public website, because that's how we've always done it. There's no direct notice outside of the abutter's notice for anything. Anything outside of that would be of courteous to those.
Sure. And I understand that.
By the petitioner. There's nothing else that the city, the board, DPD can do without becoming a situation where it would be kind of an egregious process to have to singly notify everybody in the public, I think. That's why open meeting law is a state law. That's why the public requirement documents are public requirement documents. I can, I understand and genuinely understand what your concerns are, but those are the facts as they lie.
And I understand the facts, but what do you do in the case of that neighborhood that is mostly elderly? I don't have access to a laptop, so I don't have access to the website, you know, other than if Mr. Gary didn't call me. I wouldn't have had the plan until I come tonight to receive it. You know what I mean?
I think that's a macro issue of access to public record. I mean, the micro issue would be that the city does require the public library to hold those documents. That would be a public access right. The public access right would be the internet. I think it would be a large ask to have to have that requirement, and it can't apply here. It's not being disingenuous. It's just the facts. I mean, the public notice requirement of petitioner for zoning board is the abutter's notice.
And when you speak about the abutters?
The public abutter's notice that is sent out.
Correct.
Part of the package.
Correct. And in the petition that you received of all of the abutters that disagreed, now my understanding is the contractor is obligated to notify the abutters, which they do, and if they're not in agreement, it's to somehow make an agreement with them so they're understood.
The petition comes before the board. The facts are laid at the board, and the decisions are made by the facts and the documents to the board from the petitioner. They're filing.
Sure. Okay. Then let's move on.
We certainly will. So we're in the portion where I open up the public hearing for those in favor.
Yep.
So we'll continue on that.
I can wait.
So you'd like to wait? Fine. Thank you. Moving forward, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is not closed. Those wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Hello again.
Good evening again.
Sandra McNamara, president of Centerville Community Coalition, and I'm going to start off with quality of life. Quality of life was discussed over and over and over. And again, we know apartments are well-needed in this city, absolutely, positively. But when you have a developer that wants to undersize and have people, my looking at the measurements, live in a box is one thing, but over the whole process of trying to find the parking, again, who's going to suffer by it? The neighbors. And again, you've got large buildings that surround that whole building. And again, it's the quality of life of putting 19 more apartments in there that is just going to congest that corner, just that corner alone, is just not fair to the neighborhood that already exists. And the other issue was you've got 120 signatures on the petition signed on just that one side of the street. You received letters of the people, I can't tell you how many people did come and speak, the vote, all of the meetings, in defense of what their issues were and their issues that still remain. And the other thing was, yes, they found five spaces in the 24 spaces because they're smaller and making the spaces smaller. So is that really going to happen? I mean, are you going to squeeze your truck and let somebody like try to squeeze it out of your car or your truck? I don't know. But, and we won't see that until obviously it's done and it's over. The other thing I have a question about is zoning has zoning laws, and we understand what they are, and also this state sanitary code has laws as well. And no one, no one in any city can supersede the state sanitary code. We have inspectors here that work, I was one, that work under the state sanitary code. And under the state sanitary code, the square footage is 150 square feet, and then 100 for any additional, sleeping quarters is 70 square feet of floor space with additional 50 square feet for any additional parcel. So my question to that is, if they get to undersize their units, sooner or later, they're going to need a vacancy. So when inspector goes in to inspect that unit, they have to deny it under sanitary code. So what do they do? Shut the unit down? If they're doing their job, they're not going to have a choice. And again, as of today, that's the state sanitary code. And again, I just have to drill the quality of life in that corner, just that corner alone. If he would have decreased his units, we're not asking him to go down to 10 units, just to decrease a few to lower that impact, because again, you can't convince me that there's going to be one person living in a studio. Everybody has a partner one way or the other. I don't care who they are. When you get into the one bedrooms, again, if we're guaranteed it's husband, wife, boyfriend, girlfriend, whatever the case, but we all know that ain't the case either, especially in today's economy with the way the rents are. There's no one person that can afford the rent that they're charging just for the studio. Has to be someone with them. And I don't care if they're saying they have a six-figure paycheck coming in a month, and it's not going to be a problem or whatever the case. I don't know. I just, especially when you get in now two-family, I mean, two bedrooms, again, you're getting the quality of life that now is suffocating, suffocating the neighborhood. And again, not the neighborhood, that box, just that square box is suffocated now without additional 19 units, and that's fact. You just have to ride down there or park there for a couple of hours and see the quality of life is not good down there at all. People fight constantly, and it's going to be amazing to see how they're going to back in and out on to Bolio Street or pull in or pull out or whatever the case. There's people there now, a lot of the elderly have driveways that do not park in them for the fact that they have caretakers, they have home health aides that all need to get into those driveways to do their jobs for those people that have that help coming into their home every single day without fighting or have to park a block down the street. And again, I wish you guys could open your eyes and see. Parking was not the only issue that everybody spoke about. It was the quality of life. Many people got up and spoke, especially one of the abutters, how his 70-year-old father, I think it was even older than that, father is harassed all the time by abutters, not even abutters, people in the larger buildings that want to park, and if they can't, they'll park in your spot. Not my spot, but in their spot down the end. And again, I just hope this board really takes a good look at what's going on there, and I really worked very well with this developer. I tried whenever they called. I went, I listened to them. And again, I try to bring it back to the neighborhood meeting to let the neighborhood meeting know what their concerns, if there was changes. And we asked, and we asked over and over and over, just decrease them by a few, just a few. You'll have your own parking. It will make all the world, all the sense in the world. And again, thank you for listening, and I hope you really, really think about what the decisions are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
I actually have some copies of documents that reference specific fact checking.
Thank you. There'll be no fact-checking.
My name is Maureen Kelleher, and I live on Unsworth Street. I live in a house that was built over 100 years ago by my great-grandfather, Sam Unsworth, who was the first house that was on the street, so he got to name the street Unsworth Street. I am the fourth generation that has lived in that house on Unsworth Street. I have called that home my home for over 40 years. I am here not only on behalf of my neighbors, but I'm here on behalf of my ancestors because I owe it to them to fight like hell to stop this project from going forward. I want to first touch on a couple of things that were revealed at the last meeting that we had. The first thing is the developer owns nothing in that area. The developer does not own the building, that building, does not own Boisavert Street. He's not the owner of the property. The buying or purchase of that property is conditioned upon you people giving the variances for this project, and when those variances are given, he will purchase all six properties that are located at St. Louis School. That has to be a red flag for you, that he wouldn't purchase the building until he was darn sure that his plan was going to be okayed by you. And once that starts, God help us all with the other five pieces of property that are located in the next block. If you don't approve these variances, he walks away. He doesn't own anything. He walks away. No harm, no foul, other than the money he spent to put this in front of you. No harm at all. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury to walk away from where we live, and you can rest assured that that harm is going to be something that no one is going to be able to undo once it starts, because this project will then be used as a template for the big elementary school that's over there, a template for the church building that's over there, a template for the rectory, and God knows what the two other pieces of property that aren't developed over there. So be very, very aware that his purchase of that property, five, six pieces of property, is all dependent on what you people do at that table tonight. The other thing I want to touch on a little bit, and unfortunately, the board member isn't here, but a comment was made that micro-units.
Excuse me. Mr. McCarthy's on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
So he is.
Okay. Thank you.
Pleasure.
That micro-units are becoming the new traditional when it comes to development. Respectfully, I would say that that's his opinion, and he's entitled to his opinion. There is a code in place that mandates what types of buildings and what sizes of buildings are required in each and every zoning district. And if these should now become micro-units for the purposes of any kind of development, that's up to the city council to change the code to reflect that. You, again, respectfully, don't have the authority to change the zoning code. You can have an opinion as to whether or not it's correct, but you don't have the right to change the code. I gave you a copy from the zoning regulations, and it's page 116, that talks about the Board of Appeals, you, and the powers that you in fact have. And you do have the power to hear and decide appeals or petitions for variances from the terms of this ordinance with respect to particular land or structures as set forth in General Laws 40A, Section 10. The Board of Appeals shall not grant a use variance. I'm sure that you know what a use variance is, but for the sake of the people who are here who don't, a use variance permits the use of land in a manner that is prohibited by the surrounding zoning ordinances. Example, commercial use in a residential district, that's a use variance. Multiple dwellings in single-family home district, that's a use variance. Like here, a 19-unit apartment building in the center of a TMF-zoned area, that is a use variance. If that's not convincing enough, I'll certainly go on, because at the last meeting, when I talked about variance prerequisites, I kind of got some looks like all of a sudden I was speaking a foreign language. I was under the impression that everybody was familiar with what the requirements, particularly you people on the board, with what the you people on the board, with what the requirements are to even get a variance. They're not something that are easily handed out. There are prerequisites. The Board of Appeals, and again, this is under 1123, variance prerequisites. The Board of Appeals must find all these prerequisites before it can consider granting a variance. A failure to establish any one of them is fatal. So there are three things that are required. The Board of Appeals is authorized to grant a variance from zoning ordinances only if each of the following jurisdictional conditions precedent exist. I want to, again, focus on the special hardship. Special hardship owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district. With that in mind, I'd like to go through each one of the variances that are being requested here in the filing that was initially done for this project. The first variance that they're looking for is the lot area variance. The requirement within this zone, the TMF zone, is 4,000 square feet of land for each unit. That calculation, if there's 19 units in there, would then require the building to be 76,000 square feet, which we know it isn't. The building is in fact 2,689 square feet. You have a building, you come to the building. The building doesn't come to you. You come to a building, you know what zone you're in, you know what is going to be required of you, 4,000 square feet for every unit that you put into that building. You have 23,689 square feet in your building. You take the 23,689, divide it by 4,000 square feet, and guess what you come out with? 5.9 units. Almost six, you're off just by a bit. And I don't think any of us would have a problem with a variance to put six units in instead of 5.9. The building speaks to what belongs in it. Six units, not 19. So now we're going to talk about the special hardship that they claim justifies this variance. Applicant, although this would appear to be a significant amount of relief, it is important to take into consideration that the applicant is repurposing this existing three-story building for residential use and is working within the existing footprint of the building. I'm sure you know that there are zoning laws that deal specifically with the conversion of existing buildings. Page 83 of the zoning laws deals specifically with schools that are going to be converted into living space. And the very first requirement is the exact same thing. The minimum lot area per dwelling as required under 5.1 is provided. So the fact that it's an existing building is not a special hardship. They came to the building. The building tells them what they can do with the building. And in a TMF-zoned area, that building told them six units. No more than six, and certainly not 19. The other special hardship, I guess, that was listed, due to the significant costs associated with retrofitting this property for residential use, it is important for the developer. Is that a special hardship? Does that qualify as a special hardship? Because I'm going to tell you, if it does, every person who owns property in the city of Lowell should be converting their houses. If all you had to say was, it's, it's, it was my house, I'm staying within the confines of my house, I'm going to put four units in, but I'm not changing my house, and it's going to be, you know, it's important to me. You would have every single person in the city in here looking for permits if it was that easy. It's not that easy. No special hardship on variance number one, doesn't qualify. Variance number two, open usable space. The applicant seeking relief from usable open space per dwelling. Again, 500 square feet is required per unit. Times six, they only need 3,000 square feet of open space. Times 19, 5,874. Justification. Although this request is significant, the applicant is providing significantly more usable open space than would currently exist upon the property. Yes, I would think so, because it's a school and a schoolyard. So anything that goes in there is going to be more than there was when it came to the property. Is that a special hardship? Do you see a special hardship there? Second variance, doesn't meet the requirements. Third, square footage of units. Requires the minimum square footage for one bedroom and studio, 750. Two bedrooms or more, 900. As indicated above, meaning in their listing of what the units were going to be, in the breakdown of the units, none of the proposed units meet these requirements. Not a one, not an F it to acknowledge the zoning regulations. Not a one fits within what's required. Justification. However, the size of the units is consistent with the size of many apartment-style units that have been recently approved in the city. Not in this area of Centerville. Doesn't fly in this area of Centerville. And I acknowledge that there are mill buildings all along the river that be, are being converted into micro-units. Have at it. You don't have single-family homes directly across the street or right next door to you. There's, it's the perfect place to put a microunit. And if that's where you want to live, go for it. But that's not where we live. We live in a traditional multi-family zoned area, as is this building. So this special, special circumstance, something special about the size, this was a conscious decision to go against all of these requirements. These are self-created problems, every single one of them. And there is no justification for giving variances to allow a 19-unit urban development to be put smack dab in the center of this Centerville neighborhood. It's that simple. I don't even need to go into the fact that they can't deal with the parking. But if they went six units, like the buil, building is telling them to do, they need 12 spaces out in front, cut up half of, of the schoolyard, put grass, trees, six condos, we're not here. Nobody has a problem with that. And no variances are going to be needed. That's what this building calls for. It's pretty, just going back to the prerequisites. Public good is the second prerequisite. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. You've heard about the safety, you've heard about the traffic, you've heard about the noise, you've heard about the parking. You've already heard it all. And last, the intent of zoning satisfied without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent. As I said, apartment building in the middle of a TMF-zoned area, you're going to degrade what our zoning is in our neighborhood. It's pretty clear at this point, no problem with the building, no problem with the property, six-unit condominium. This is business to them. Nothing more than business to them. To us, it's our homes, it's our neighborhoods, it should be respected, and it should be protected. I'm asking you to do what the code dictates you do. Just do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board?
Dennis Deegan, 51.
If you'd like to speak.
19 seems excessive with the amount of cars and everything else, especially what's going to happen across the street. Does anybody know how many units are going to go in there? The school, the, and the, across the street?
Sorry, sir, can you just state your name and address for the record? I don't think, I don't think I heard it. Your name and address for the record, please.
Dennis Deegan.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, we can only speak to the petition at hand because that's what's on file. If it's not on file, it's on public record, and it's not, it's not to us. So I, I can't answer that question either way until it comes.
We're going to be way over 50.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't live in probabilities, I just live in facts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board? Any board have a comment? Any board members? Judge?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like the last time, again, I would like to recuse myself from this particular petition because I feel that in the interest and the integrity of the board and the neighborhood groups, that me being president of the Centerville Neighborhood Action Group, I don't think I should participate in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. That being said, I'd like to open up to the board, Ben, Mr. Vice Chair.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to, to Mr. Gary, Mr. Gary, Council Gary, quick question, sir. I think it's great that you were, you were able to go back to the drawing board and reduce the, increase the number of, of parking units and spaces for the units. Are you aware of any issues around sanitation issues or anything along those effects of one of the speakers?
Sanitation issues?
Yeah.
In regard to the develop, the developer's plan is to have private, privatize the sanitation, the, you know, trash pickup, recycling, that will all be maintained within the site and by a, by a private contractor? If that was your question.
Yeah, yeah, just, I wanted to ask that. And then, Mr. Gary, through you, can you speak a little bit about, I know we talk a lot about just, just the number of units. Are you guys, are you firm on 19 units, right? You're not going to reduce it down by any amount? Is that correct?
That's correct. We cannot. So I, I would just suggest that we're converting this property with the intent and in harmony with Article 8.1 of the zoning ordinance. This property does not get converted without variances. It just doesn't happen. And, and nobody's putting six condominium units in there. It's not, it won't happen.
Right.
We believe we brought a, a very good project forward. We have two, the developing group is, is a very good, solid development group. They're city of Lowell residents. This is a long-term hold for them, and it's, ultimately, we will be a good project at this location.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. One more question. Would you, would your client be open to continuance at all?
It would not be. We feel like we have vetted this, this proposal very well. We've submitted the documents to the board as, as is customary. I don't think anything out of the usual, out of the ordinary has happened here in regards to submittals.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gary. Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I do believe that the petitioner and the applicant has, has done a lot of good intention, a lot of compromising in terms of increasing parking units, really going back to the drawing board. You know, I know it's not a, it's not an ideal situation, but overall, I do agree that, you know, units and housing, living units are required and kind of essential part of the master plan. So, you know, overall, I think this is a good repurpose of the building, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman. So I, I'll wait to see what my colleagues say. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Sean? Mr. Clark?
Uh, thank, thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Gary, can you just speak as to the variances and what the hardship, the special hardship would...
So again, the, the, this is a unique property, a church, I mean, a school building in the middle of the neighborhood. It's not, it's not unique in the city. It's, it's fairly common, but we are seeing some of the schools close, particularly the parochial schools. And the city adopted by way of a city council vote, Article 8.1, in order to repurpose these buildings. And that's exactly what we're doing here. So the hardship is essentially the type of building that we're dealing with, the, you know, in relation to the other lots and buildings within the neighborhood.
Right, thank you. I, I tend to agree with you on that. I think there is a special hardship in this instance on that. Just to speak to the, the purpose of this hearing. This, there is a zoning code, yes, correct. It's set out by the city, approved by the city. There is statutory law that sets up a zoning board of appeals. The purpose of the zoning, I mean, the zoning code is, does set out parameters. The purpose of the zoning board of appeals is the body that can grant variances and grant special permits and provide relief from those variances. If every place was stuck with just sticking to the zoning code and putting the, having to go by those parameters, this board wouldn't, there'd be no purpose for this board at all. And that's why we're here. We have a petitioner who, like every other petitioner, provides, provide plans and asking for relief from specific parts of the zoning code. And we do have to go through the criteria of that relief, including special hardship, which I believe Attorney Gary has presented, and I think I'm sad, I believe I'm satisfied with that. Public good, whether the purpose of granting the possession be for the public good. You can weigh that either way on this project. We have affordable, more housing, which is, well, is very well, much needed and is a very, very huge issue. More money on the tax rolls for the city. And, you know, I understand weighing that with the public good on the, the neighborhood and, and putting that, so it's, it can go either way on that. And then the intent of zoning satisfied. Now, I know before we had some issues with that, but I think now the new proposal, parking being the main issue, the new proposal that was provided, where we now added four spots, or five, five spots, right? I believe for...
We've added 10 spots.
10 spots, 10 spots. And, I mean, I like the fact that you at least kept some open space back there. I know that was a tough...
That's a win.
That, that was, I think, last meeting I said it was like, you know, a catch-22 situation where you got to get rid of the open space in order to provide more parking, and we want to try to keep up in space, and it's like, and I think you did a very good job on, you know, going back to the drawing board on that as well. So I, I understand the concerns of the neighbors. I understand the concerns of the neighborhood, and I understand that parking is a major issue in that area. But we have a project here that's, it seems to me, it's, it's something that would fit in the, it'd fit, and it seems to me it's something that would be possibly more beneficial to the neighborhood. Otherwise, we either have a vacant building that's just going to sit there and deteriorate forever, and, I mean, and who knows what else may happen down the future with this. And again, you're, you're into the, you have to deal with the archdiocese and negotiations, correct? So I think we brought that up, the archdiocese, I don't think they're much for negotiating as far as the sale of the property. As to another point, as far as this, the other, the other property of the archdiocese, we only have to deal with the property of this before us. We don't have, we, we can't speculate on other properties and then what's going to happen to other properties in the neighborhood. to other properties in the neighborhood, what the possibility of those being converted, that is out of our purview. We have to deal with the property that is, is before us, so. That being said, I mean, I listen to my other fellow board members, but I'm, I think the criteria here has been satisfied, so, but I'll listen to what my, my other fellow board member says, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sean Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I have a couple of questions. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. On the site plan, you have the new parking on Bolio Street, on the grasscrete, which I think is wonderful that we're using grasscrete there to allow for less impervious material on the site. We don't have a dimension for those spaces, are those nine by eighteen?
I believe those dimensions are on the site plan, are they are nine by eighteen?
They, they're not on the site plan that I'm looking at that's available online. So I'd like to see the site plan corrected to indicate nine by eighteen for those spaces.
So if you look at, Member Callahan, if you look at page three, sheet three of six, they're at the bottom of the zoning table.
Okay. Grasscrete, no, but you're right, you're right, that does say, I didn't, okay, I stand corrected, thank you for pointing that up. Great. And then, in the comments from DPD, we don't have the landscaping listed as, as far as what it is. It's wonderful that we're getting shade trees on this site, knowing how hot it's been in the city, the importance of having some relief for impervious spaces to, to be shaded. Adding those shade trees would be wonderful, I think, for relieving some of the heat island effect that the current site creates for the remaining neighborhood. But, we don't know what those trees are. I'd like to see a condition that these shade trees be at least twenty-foot canopy at their mature growth, just because I think it's important for us to, again, mitigate the effects that the site currently has in the neighborhood with heat island and increasing the high temperatures that, you know, right now are already pretty miserable for the city to endure, but are even worse so with the pavement. I think that the parking layout is tremendous, great, great improvement, the use of the spaces seven-and-a-half foot wide is something that I've been practicing in commercial architecture with site projects for twenty years. And it's more common in the Boston area than it probably is in Lowell, but it certainly is successful. It's not ideal for retail by any stretch, but for places where the vehicles stay for a long period of time, like when you're coming home, you park, and when you go back to work or leave for the day, you, you leave. Those kind of instances, I see it more and more being done, and so I think this makes a lot of sense. And, of course, repurposing this building is paramount, and finding ways to increase the housing stock in the city for people to afford to be able to stay in the city is tremendous. So I think that the work that you've done is terrific. I just have that one condition, that the shade trees in the mature state be at least twenty-foot diameter canopy.
We would be happy to condition approval on that, working with the city. There was actually a note from Jessica Wilson, I believe, suggesting that the developing team work with her or her staff with regard to plantings, and we're certainly more than happy to do that.
I, I agree, I think we should probably add that as a condition as well, but I, I think it's critical that we, as a board, establish that we get mature shade trees that are substantial, especially in locations where the pavement really does affect the rest of the neighborhood, and we want to mitigate that heat island effect if we can. But I think that this has gone a long way to mitigating the, the circumstance of parking being at such a deficit before, and where we have eleven of the nineteen units being studio or one-bedroom. The code, parking code in the city requires two parking spaces per apartment, which could be a three-bedroom apartment, and we're talking about the smaller, I, I think that relief being sought for the studios and the one-bedrooms makes sense, so I think I can support that. Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is troubling. You heard my comments at the last meeting, I sided with the residents, stating my own personal experience, having been a, a member of that Centerville community for forty-plus years. I thought the residents, their criticisms were both legitimate, and they were cited in a very reasonable fashion. So it was my hope, was really my hope, that we could make some concession, and I understand that some concessions have been made here with respect to parking. My hope was I could come here this evening, and there would be parking added to the plan, which has happened, and a reduction in units. Those were my objections at the last meeting, too dense of a project. I also really was rooting for the repurpose of the building, and I still believe that needs to occur. But I must say, the comments expressed by Ms. Callahan in opposition to this project, I find so compelling that it does not allow me to support this. I'm saddened to hear that this is an up or down vote, essentially, that there are no further concessions to be made. Not only saddened to hear it, I'm, I'm rather shocked to hear it. Now, I also raised other factors at the last meeting with respect to the archdiocese, and I understand we're only talking about this specific petition, but we all know this is one big puzzle that could turn into a very large development there. And I, what I hear is nineteen units work, apparently because of the price tag the archdiocese has put on the property. What I say is the archdiocese needs to step up here. Let them lower the price tag to make this development affordable for these very qualified, reputable individuals to come in and develop that property. There's no question about their character, the work they do, their integrity, they deserve, and they should have our thanks for their investments in law, we should be encouraging their future investments. I do put some blame on the archdiocese. Whether it's fair for me to say that or not, I have to. As Ms. Callahan said, you're back-ending into this building, the building presents itself and it tells you what you can do. Well, what this building allows you to do by code, I guess, isn't profitable. Why is that? Price tag's too high. It's the archdiocese who stands a lot to gain here by the sale of these other properties, is the largest open space in Centerville. I had asked Mr. Faust at the last meeting if he could speak with the archdiocese to see what they could do, if they want this to happen, they want, and see that property repurposed, and do the right thing by the neighbors. Those people were parishioners for that parish, if they want to do right by them, who did so right by the archdiocese for year, for years, then the archdiocese will step up to the plate and do the right thing. I don't blame these developers, I understand what they're doing, even Ms. Callahan said it, business is business. And at the last meeting, I heard comments from the neighborhood that said, we'd like to see the building repurposed as well. The neighbors want it, they understand the hazard of a, of building that size vacant. So why is that? Who's preventing it from developing? Who's putting obstacles in the way for a reputable developer to come in and make a few bucks and also add to our, our housing stock? It's the archdiocese. The way this is presently constructed, the way it's presented tonight, if there are no concessions that, that can be made, I can't support this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a good repurpose of the building, but I had some questions with regard to parking tables, parking standards, six-point-one, seven, for, for stormwater management, screening, and landscape open space, was that, has that been provided in the plans?
Yes, we've provided, we have a, we have a landscape plan, and, well, the landscape is shown in the site plan. So yes, it is provided for in the plan.
And it, and it does meet the ordinance, does it?
Pardon me?
Does it meet six-point-one, seven, eight, and nine of the ordinance? I don't see anywhere where it shows that in the plans, you know?
Mark, do you?
Do you have to speak for the podium?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, that should be included, you know, that would be a condition out, you know, yeah.
I know that we were, you know, in, in working with the planning department staff, you know, that did come up, and, and, you know, we feel we can address it by way of working with the staff on the landscape plan as we move forward through the project.
Yeah, that's, I think that's it for me, Mr. Chairman, I was concerned with the parking, you know, the, the parking plans, so, but I'd be willing to consider the petition, you know, if they, on the condition that they meet those requirements, so.
Well, I'm sorry.
He just wants to make that a condition of?
Yes, yes.
Of this, of the project, so we're looking at you so far. Thank you, Robert. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. So, we clearly have, we have a unique property, we have circumstances that present itself for building repurposed. The city has gone through this repurpose process with several other neighborhood Catholic parochial schools, and they've been successful. Over in, in South Lowell, Sacred Heart was repurposed, rectory, church, school was removed, and my memory serves me, I think fourteen units went up, side by side, with ample parking. This particular site, whether it's repurposed for housing, it's, it's going to be repurposed, it's, everything's a function of money, everything's a function of business, and quality of life does always come into play. I would say that any, in each and every petition that comes before the zoning board, whether it's for a special permit or variance, is contingent on either the sale of the property, redevelopment of the property, business going into the property, a resident staying in the city if they're looking to do an addition or turn one family into two, two into three, three into four. They're all conditions, and conditioned upon the deal. It's, it's a fact, there's, there's no other, there's no other way to, you know, have an open conversation of the purpose of the zoning board, and no other member tonight spoke more to the, to the balance and power and the need of the zoning board appeals than Mr. Callahan, our clerk. We, we look, we look to the petition, I think we have lived in this city with vacant buildings, and we have seen demise of the surrounding properties in the neighborhood. I, I made it, open conversation last meeting that the school, that school, when active for decades upon decades upon decades, was an extremely busy school, it was an extremely busy parish. And to Mr. Brier's point, it is because of the parishioners and because of the schoolchildren and the parents. I attended that, some of those, they'd have the fairs over there, we all seen the wonderful work they did, very busy time. Five days a week during the school day, Saturdays, masses on Sunday, that all is a requirement of parking, there's a parking requirement there, there's a live, live and let live, give and take there. I'm more of an optimist, I look at where do we go from here? If this petition that has come forward, clearly there is a business deal, we all know that, it's a property that is for sale, there's, there's buyers, but I think the demand in housing, I think that if we look to how we live today, this generation of young professionals are very well, high earners, they live in small spaces, they necessarily don't have cars, they bike, they Uber, they walk, they use public transportation. If you look at any redevelopment of any major city, in any state in the union, there's a compromise of residential housing. And I believe that minimizing your resident is part of what this up-and-coming generation does. It's just a fact, you can see it in Malden, Medford, Somerville, you see it in Pellam, New Hampshire, they're building, they're building little houses for, for, they're building fifty-five and over, under, under a thousand square feet. So, when I look at this site, and I look at the, the whole puzzle, if I may, I have to walk away and look at this project individually. And I think there's been, there's been a lot of give and take, there's been a lot of compromise, certainly, there's been a lot of steel nerves, if you would, on both sides. But when you have developers, born and raised and live here, willing to invest millions of dollars and stand here in succession and meetings, tell their story, speak of why they're doing this, they're not going, I don't see, they're not going anywhere. We have the developers, we have, we have landlords that are absent that have properties here, they don't, they don't pay their taxes, they don't come to the city, they don't redevelop, they don't care. So, when we have those opportunities, if we want to grow as a city, if the city wants to become, I, I've been on this board, I believe, well over a dozen years, if I said it once, if I said it a thousand times, if we want to be Cambridge and Somerville and Boston and, and the like, we have to make these steps forward, and part of that is change. Fairly unknown is, is always the biggest game changer, but change moves the city forward. There's a reason we don't have a rotary phone anymore, there's a reason why, you know, urban and suburban development are reducing in size, it's because of the economic times, it's because of the way people live, it's because of the way people travel. You know, I personally live in a, a development right now in the Highlands that came before this board, and that particular development, that everything they said they would do here, and they have provided numerous housing opportunities over there. And I can tell you this, there's more empty parking spots, both inside that garage and outside the garage, I see more young professionals that go to the university on pedal bikes, Ubering, ride-share, taking public transportation. I, I've witnessed it, I just, and I, and I've seen it time and time again. I'm not minimizing the stress and the concerns that the dense neighborhood is going to incur, they're there, but it's a risk reward. And as Mr. Callahan said, the purpose of the zoning board is to hear each variance, each special permit on its own merit, and weigh those out. And I think- each special permit on its own merit, and weigh those out, and I think, I think that has taken place here. I think that, that has taken place with the petitioner, with the neighborhood groups, with, with, with the citizens that spoke, uh, very passionately and eloquently and factually on, on their, on their belief and their, and their, their understanding, and I understand that. Um, but there is, there is gonna be another repurpose of several dozen buildings in the city, and in order to continue to move and grow, I think we have to understand that not everything is as it used to be, and sometimes, positive change and committed change is, is, is a benefit to the city. So, I, I am in support of this, I do think that it is a good repurpose of the building, and I yield to my colleagues for any further comments or concerns. Mr. Callahan?
A couple of, uh, housekeeping, uh, things, I just wanna touch base, I was just looking over the plans, Attorney Gary. So, I see that the updated floor plans have the bike racks located now on the back end of the, of the building, yeah, the new parking spots underneath the canopy there? That's correct?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The, the updated floor plans, uh, they show that the bike racks have been, um, moved back to behind the canopy on the back end of the building, is that?
I believe there's one on the, uh, north side of the building.
Yes. Um, okay. That's, I think that was my question, is that bike rack planning?
Yeah.
Hey, plan on keeping that one there as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right, it was moved back to that side of the property.
Okay, so the, so the bike rack, okay, there's a, there's one bike rack on the site plan, the updated site plan, it's on the side of the building, on the-
Right.
Um, near the Beauvais Street side, and then on the floor plans, it looks like there's a plan for two additional bike racks in the back near, uh, the Bolio Street side-
Yes, the side, the interior bike racks.
Okay, so, all right, so, but the plan is to keep them all, all there, right?
Yes.
Okay, no, I just wanted to double check and make sure that that wasn't, uh-
That's right.
-an error, that the bike rack that was initially on the site plan was supposed to be removed and then pushed that back to, so the three bike racks is fine, I, I just wanted to double check and make sure. Um, also, as far as the floor plans are concerned, I know she meant, there was mentioned that there's an area for the, uh, res, for potential residents to obtain, you know, where they pick up their mail, and then they, uh, packages and, and whatnot, was that, was that located, what, utility room on the front end, or what's?
It's on the, um, it's on the first floor, which is the floor where you walk in and step down, and it's, um, on the, Carrie, is that the Beauvais side or the Bolio side? Beauvais side of the property, uh, there's, there's the mailboxes up against the interior wall, and then there's the storage boxes, uh, to the exterior, I guess.
Okay, I don't see it, I'm seeing utility room on Beauvais side, on Beauvais Street, you said, right?
Um, yeah.
So, I see a utility room and a sprinkler room, I don't see anything else designated as far as mail room or-
Approach, I can show you this.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one? I could've swore this, with, these are the most updated floor plans that-
So, mailbox and then the storage.
Okay. Uh, I'll check this, maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. Yeah, I don't see them. Mailbox and storage.
I think he has them up.
Okay, all right, so we have them, those are the ones Dylan?
Uh, yes, we have those.
Okay, I guess, I didn't, maybe they're just not up, were they uploaded to the website and just not there, or?
We have them.
Okay. All right. Okay, if that's, that's the plan we're going on, uh, so I just wanna make sure that we're clear on that, so, um, just to clarify, so, um, okay, I don't have anything further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns the board? None being heard. Um, I believe we have two conditions, Counselor, clerk will read them into record and seek a motion.
I just wanted to double check and clarify, so Dennis, you said shade trees to be a minimum, uh, twenty-foot canopy?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's, uh, number one, and, uh, Robert, what was Robert's again?
Six, uh, six of the zoning ordinance, the, uh, how many requirements for green, landscape open space, and, uh, DPD-
So, work with DPD to-
Update the plans.
Work with DPD to update plans for-
And the landscape, and the landscape plan.
Correct.
Right. Section six. Both acceptable. Update.
Total of three.
Plans under section six.
Mm-hmm, and then the full landscape plan.
And full landscape plan. Okay. So, that's three conditions?
Correct.
Okay. So, it's, again, so shade tree to be a minimum of twenty-foot canopy, uh, work with DPD to update plans under section six, and then the third one is full land, provide a full landscape plan to DPD for approval, so, okay. You got those conditions Dylan? Okay. So, with that said, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two for seventy-two, seventy-four Beauvais Street, and two fifty-three West Sixth Street, for variance approval under section five point one for lottery per dwelling unit and usable open space, section six point one for off-street parking, and section eight point one point three four for minimum square footage to convert the existing school building located on the property into nineteen residential units.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by the Vice Chair, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved with conditions.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with conditions.
Member Briere.
Disapproval.
Member Nurove.
Approved with conditions.
So, you've been approved, we really should have best of luck with your petition, and we-
Thank you.
-everybody participating in the process.
Thank you all for your time.
Have a good evening. Moving forward on to new business, EBA twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two for a special permit, Pride Star Student Transportation, Inc., seventeen oh three Middle Sixth Street, Article twelve point six subsection G. Pride Star Student Transportation, Inc. has applied to Lowell zoning board of appeals, seeking special permit approval at seventeen oh three Middle Sixth Street. The applicant is seeking to legalize the storage of Pride Star buses, which have been stored in the parking lot since two thousand eighteen. The subject property is located suburban misuse SMU zoning district and requires special permit approval under Article twelve, twelve point six subsection G for parking lots other than those provided as accessory use to the principal use conducted on the lot and any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor, how are you?
Good evening, Chairman Perrin, members of the board, uh, for the record, Attorney John Cox, three seventy-five Gorham Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent the Pride Star Student Transportation, Inc. Before I begin, you may not see that Dave Daley is not here this evening, the principal, he called me about, uh, two hours before I got here, he apparently threw his back out earlier today, so, uh, if that's something that the board wants to put off, or, you know, thank you. So, um, Pride Star Student Transportation has a city contract to, uh, transport special needs students throughout the city. They've got approximately a hundred vehicles, buses slash vehicles, that they, they, uh, need to fulfill that obligation, and since two thousand and eighteen, they have had a lease, what, at seventeen oh three Middle Sixth Street, to park their vehicles there. Now, you may recall, Middle Sixth Street, and I think there's a plan that shows that, kind of, the, the, the condo building's kind of a long building, there's a huge parking lot in front, there's a, um, a, uh, physical fitness, uh, place there, and a few other businesses. Um, Mr. Daley parks his vehicles behind that building, in other words, between the building and the Marmack River, way off of Middle Sixth Street. Uh, it's come to the landlord's attention, city's attention, and Mr. Daley's attention that they need a special permit to park those vehicles there, uh, in accordance with, uh, twelve, twelve, uh, six G. So, uh, that's what we're here for, we're hoping that the board will grant this, that's the special permit, uh, there'll be no difference in the use that's been going on there since two thousand and eighteen, uh, the lease is extended, I think we, we have records of, uh, copies of the leases, the leases have been extended to two thousand and twenty-five, if they in fact stay that long, but clearly, this is a passive use, one that's been going on with no, no issues, no problems for four years now, and, uh, as you know, we've got the, uh, a very positive memo from both DPD and the engineering department, one dated June first, the other one July fifteenth, um, stating that they have no issues with, uh, with this proposed, um, special permit. So, uh, in accordance with the master plan, uh, it will keep a existing business in Lowell, it will be passive, have no, if, negative effect on the environment or the neighborhood, and, uh, there will be no negative impact on public services, in fact, it will enhance public services because, uh, they play such a vital role to the, uh, special needs students of the city. So, with that, we would ask that, uh, the board look favorably upon this request, and, uh, and they can keep doing what they have been doing, uh, for the last several years.
Thank you, Counselor, I appreciate that. Uh, that being said, I'd like to open up the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed, I'd like to open up the board, Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman, um, yeah, this doesn't, this, this makes total sense, uh, it's, doesn't, I don't find any real issues with this, especially, this property's being used, was, been used constantly for the past four years for the storage, and there hasn't been any concerns, nobody's been here to, you know, approve or oppose it, um, and, uh, yes, to keep, uh, I mean, the, the work that they do in transporting the students around is, is well, you know, well needed and, you know-
Yes.
-appreciated for the, uh, for the city, so I think it makes total sense, and I'll, I'll be supporting this, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, uh, it's not often that a petition is narrative and the comments issued by the DPD are almost identical. When that occurs, makes it a real simple vote for me, I'm in favor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briere.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, um, I just wanna say that, um, I'm really happy to support this, uh, the fact that we have these, uh, storage, um, uh, of these much-needed vehicles happening in, uh, location, that both supports an existing, you know, structure that probably fell on some hard times, has some opportunity to gain some, uh, leasable space with their parking lot, and it, it, it actually screens these vehicles, it's an industrial zone, it's on a main thoroughfare, it makes total sense, so, um, I think this is a win-win for everybody, and I can absolutely support this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I also agree, um, I, I think the, the effect of this is, is very minimal, there's, there's virtually no impact, um, and, in fact, it looks like it's, uh, correcting a clerical error, you know, from my perspective, so, I would be voting in favor, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Robert?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have no issue with the special permit petition, so, best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, Counselor, I, I will, um, you know, clearly, the, the continued success that Pride Star and the Daley Group, with Dave Daley, Sean Daley, and Brian Shanley, um, and the commitment they have given to the city with their extended businesses, um, once again shows their character and integrity. Uh, this clearly was, uh, was an oversight, um, they've been in operation, I hear nothing but, uh, good deeds done by them on a daily basis, they're professional, they're courteous, they're providing a service that's, uh, near and dear to all of us, um, and they're, and they're good, they're good people, um, and so, this is an easy one for us, I, I wish Mr. Daley the best with his, uh-
I'll, I'll tell him you, uh, you had, you gave him an excused absence.
Convolating, he has, has an excused absence, so, uh, there's no opposition here, we could just, uh, move to a, motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two for a special permit approval for seventeen oh three Middle Sixth Street under Article twelve point six.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Proko, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approved.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member McCarthy.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approved.
Member Proko.
Approved.
Member Nurove.
Approved.
So, you've been answered, you approve, we wish you the best of luck, we thank you for your-
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, gentlemen, and I wanna, I always thank Dylan and the staff at DPD, they're very, very helpful, uh, always.
We appreciate that.
I want you, I want you to know that.
No, we appreciate that, we do, uh, we do have a good group there.
Have a good night.
Take care, sir. Moving forward on to new business, EBA twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three for a special permit, North, Northeast Health Services LLC at fifty-nine Lowes Way, suite four oh one, Article twelve point eight subsection C, Northeast Health Services LLC has applied to Lowell's only board of appeals, seeking special permit approval at fifty-nine Lowes Way. The applicant is seeking to convert a suite at the existing office building to a medical facility. The property is located in the high-rise commercial HRC zoning district and requires special permit approval for the proposed use under section twelve point eight subsection C, and any other relief required under Lowell's old ordinance, is the petitioner here this evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Christopher Agostino, counsel for-
Good evening, how are you, sir?
Uh, good, thanks, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, yes, sir, we can hear you. Just give us a little bit about your project.
Great, thanks for, sure, so, um, I'm here tonight with, uh, a representative from the applicant, Julie Pearlman, who's the Director of Real Estate and Strategic Growth, and again, uh, my name's Christopher Agostino, I'm counsel for the applicant, we're here seeking a special permit, as indicated, to connect, uh, to conduct medical or clinic use at fifty-nine Lowes Way. Uh, to tell you a little bit about the applicant, Northeast Health Services, uh, doing business as Transformations Care Network, um, it's a national network of mental health care providers who offer high-quality outpatient mental health care services, um, such as therapy and psychiatry to treat a variety of, uh, mental health disorders, including anxiety and, and depression, um, in an outpatient setting, and as you can imagine, uh, that's an in-demand service these days, so TCN is expanding their operations and has identified, uh, the premises, uh, as a site that's appropriate, uh, for their expansion, as it offers, uh, convenient location, convenient accessibility, um, at fifty-nine Lowes Way, which is in the Connector Park, um, uh, shopping area adjacent to the Lowes store, uh, which, as you indicated, is in the high-rise commercial district, um, which requires approval of this type of use by special permit. Uh, this type of use is regulated by the Massachusetts State Department of Public Health, and it fits within the definition of medical or clinic use provided in Lowell's bylaw at section twelve point eight C, and therefore, we're here this evening seeking special permit approval pursuant to eleven point three of your local bylaw. Um, as indicated, this is a suite within an existing office building, there are no changes structurally proposed to the building, it's just going to be fit out of the existing office suite, um, there's plenty of parking, and I would also indicate, uh, that the town planner, uh, noted that the parking is adequate, and they otherwise are in support of our special permit request. Um, we believe generally we satisfy the special permit standards, which, again, generally speaking, uh, the benefits of the proposed use outweigh any detrimental impact, um, where the proposed use, uh, is offering high-quality mental health care services, uh, in what has been a time of need for those services, we feel as though it'll offer a benefit to, uh, both the city of Lowell and, uh, the surrounding communities as well, um, and because it's an existing facility, uh, that offers, um, uh, an appropriate setting for these types of services, uh, the detrimental impact is negligible. Um, I'd also note that there's an existing special permit for conducting, uh, a dental office in the same building, uh, which would necessarily have had to have satisfied the same special permit criteria, given that twelve point eight C also references, uh, dental office use. So, we're asking the board to approve our special permit application this evening, um, under the standards set forth at eleven point three of the bylaw, um, I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you very much, Counselor. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed, I'd like to open up to anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed, I'd like to open up to the board, Dennis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I, um, am really happy that we're supporting, um, the growth of, um, mental health services in the city- city here and finding ways to satisfy them with space. I think this special permit makes a lot of sense in this location especially, where there's plenty of parking, absolutely plenty of parking there, and, and it's an absolutely compatible use of the building to have a mental health facility there, in my opinion. As a father of a psychiatrist, as a person who understands the need of mental health, and as a person who participated in an opera funding community event, where that came out as the number one item that we need to really focus on as a city and as a community, is our mental health in the, in the city especially, I think that this makes a lot of sense, so I absolutely want to support this, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to support these desperately needed services in our community. Vote in favor, thank you.
Thank you, Robert?
I had a question, what floor is this clinic occupying? I don't see it on the plan.
At Suite four oh one, which is the fourth floor.
Okay, so I, I'm in favor of this special permit, I think it fits in, within the confines of the high-rise commercial zoning district, so I'll be in favor of the petition, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I also vote, will be voting in favor of this, this is a service that is so well-needed, and I, I too, like, Member McCarthy attended an opera funding, and the majority of, the, the most prolific priority was mental health, and I think any resources that can be in this city would definitely benefit, you know, the city and the surrounding areas, so I'll be voting in favor, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van, Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, again, I think it's a great reuse conversion of the suite, you know, like my colleague said, I think this is a service or business that's really needed, whether people know it or not, it's, it's a great resource to have in the community, so another great kind of social service in the, in our backdoor, so I think this is a great use of, of this conversion, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman, yeah, this seems pretty straightforward, it certainly would be something that would be an asset to the city and the residents of the, of the city of Lowell to have a facility like this in the area, and I would be approving it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Consular, I appreciate your, your in-depth conversation and analysis of, of this conversion, these services are a vital part of any environmental, city environment that needs to continue to move in a forward, positive position, and we're happy and we're appreciative that your client is willing to take their, their services and bring them to our city, and the accessibility to this property via the connector and the highway, public transportation will bode well too for your, for your clients, so I'm in full support. Any other comments or concerns? None being heard, may I have a motion, Mr. Clark?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2022-33 for fifty-nine Lowes Way for a special permit approval under Article twelve point eight C to convert Suite four oh one to a medical facility.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Proko, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approve.
Member, Member Nuroke?
Approved.
Consular, you've been unanimously approved, we wish you the best of luck, your conversion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank the entire zoning board and the town planner's office, who was, everyone was very helpful in helping us prepare the application and get in front of the board this evening, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your kind words. Moving forward on to new, other, new business, ZBA 2022-34, a special permit, Letitia Santos at fifteen twenty-seven Middle Sixth Street, Unit four, Article twelve point four subsection one. Letitia Santos has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals seeking special permit approval at fifteen twenty-six, twenty-seven Middle Sixth Street. The applicant is seeking to do bodywork at Heaven's Beauty Salon. The property is located in the regional retail RR zoning district and requires a special permit pursuant to Article twelve point four one and any other relief required on Lowell zoning, Lowell zoning ordinance, as the petitioner with us tonight. Do we have any notice for non-appearance or a continuance?
We've not heard from the applicant since signing of the agenda.
Okay, so, none being heard, out of professional courtesy, we will move this to the next meeting as we have done in past practice, any objection by the board? None being heard, our next meeting is August eighth, may I have a motion to move to a continuance for this petition to August eighth?
Well, let me check, Dylan, what's the calendar look like for August eighth, just so we're not overflowed. I know it's summer, we only have one meeting on July and August, so...
Yep, let me check, um, there are, the agenda is full for August eighth, so...
Strike that.
You can continue to the September twelfth, where the agenda's pretty open.
Perfect. So be said, so be written, may I have a motion, Mr. Clark?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2022-34 for one five two seven Middle Sixth Street, Unit four, to continue the public hearing of this matter to September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy, may I have a roll call, thank you, Mr. Clark?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve continuance to September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Uh, Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approve continuance to September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Member Nuroke?
Approve continuance, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
We have an approval for continuance, moving forward on to other business, we have minutes for approval for June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, meeting minutes, any comments, concerns, additions, deletions, retractions, redactions? None being heard, may I have a motion for approval and acceptance?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Briere, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve and accept minutes for six twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Approve the minutes for June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the meeting minutes for July, I'm sorry, what was that, June? I'm sorry. June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approve minutes, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
And Member Nuroke?
Approve.
This has been accepted and approved, moving forward on to other business, we have no other business, any comments or concerns by the board? None being heard, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, if I could...
Oh, strike that, I apologize, Mr. McCarthy, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I just wanted to give the board, that's all right, that's right, I just wanted to give the board an update on a, a meeting that was had at the City Council regarding the Sustainability Council's presentation on Heat Island effect. Myself and Jerry Prichet from the planning department spoke in favor of the Sustainability Council's presentation, and what the focus was of the presentation is trying to do what we can in the city to minimize the effect of Heat Island, which it basically is dark roofs, dark pavement, things that are heat sinks in the city that don't reflect the light or, as trees do, absorb the light and provide shade, so there's a renewed effort, I think, in the city to try to mitigate these effects, and I'm looking forward to that report becoming public. It was shown to the council members, and it was referred to the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee as to what to do next with that report and what changes we want to make in the city, but again, it's landscaping for us and minimizing pavement and potentially having white roofs and that kind of thing that we can influence with our projects that we review, just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you very much, and I know I can speak on behalf of the board, we appreciate your time to this endeavor and, and being on this commission and providing this board with, with information. We all can agree that paving, pavement, hard surfaces has run rampant in the city, reducing green space, reducing open space and environmental issues, so these issues are very important, and having Mr. McCarthy represent the zoning board with his professional qualification bodes well for us as a board and for the city, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other business? None being heard? You have a question, ma'am?
I do, I have a notification here, there was some, certain...
So this is a notification for one twenty Burnside Street, they sent out a notification, however, they did not meet any other requirements, and they were taken off the agenda, so that may be coming forward in the future, but they would need to provide a new notification to you.
Apologies for you having to spend the entire evening with us and not getting your information earlier. That being said, may I have a motion for adjourn?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned, have a great night.
Thank you.